Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 18th meeting of the Monmouth City Council. I will ask Phyllis Bowman, our city recorder, for the roll call, please. Counselor Belts is excused. Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Present.
Counselor McKeel?
Here.
Counselor Oberst?
Here.
Counselor Ridgway?
Here.
Mayor Coats? I am present. And Counselor Oberst, would you lead us all in the flag salute this evening if you'll stand if you're able? Before we get to our business agenda tonight, I did want to take a moment to let folks know that we lost a valuable community member last week. Donna Cable passed away November 10th. And Donna and her family are longtime members of our community, and they've served in so many ways. They were active in so many things. But very importantly to us, Donna served on the City of Monmouth Planning Commission for 23 years. From 2008 to 2018, she actually served as the Planning Commission Chairwoman. Her wisdom and insight were valuable contributions to the decision process, which is extremely important on that particular group. She considered the impact of each decision to the community as a whole and the effect on the specific neighborhood and neighbors where action was taking place. Donna had a great memory on previous land use actions. She would often refer to them in discussions for similar applications years later. She kept her Planning Commission packets so she could easily find the prior work of the Planning Commission. Our thoughts are with her children, her sons, daughters-in-law, and certainly her grandchildren and other family members. But she will be greatly missed by us and by many in this community for all the things she's done. So our hearts go out for Donna Cable. With that, I will take us to our first item of business, which is the consent calendar. The minutes of the council meeting of November 4th were in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections or any motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I have an addition. Last meeting, when we were doing the transportation study, I made comments that I was hoping that there would be more for bicycles. And I would like that added to that section of the minutes.
Yeah, we did have quite a discussion about that. So Phyllis, if you can find a way to do that. And do you have anything specific, Counselor McKeel, or just in general?
That would be fine. Just so that there's a record of it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else? I don't think we need to see those amended minutes, but I will not sign them until they're in there. So I will accept a second with that amendment. Oh, go ahead.
I move approval.
Well, I'll second it.
With the amended addition to the bicycle discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor, but your name, Carey, for the motion, and Counselor McKeel for the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Seeing none, thank you for that. That does bring us to our public comments section of the meeting. This time is reserved for public comments, and we look for items that are not being otherwise discussed tonight. We do limit speakers to three minutes when we call your name. If you come up and the microphone there, you have to press the little bar on the front. And when the light is red, that means it's on. So speak into the mic, pull it towards you if necessary, so we can all hear, and state your name and where you reside for the record. And we do have a timer up there. I think you can see it better than I can. So first of all, this evening, we have Cassidy and can't quite read the name Mickelson, though. That's Mickelson is my mother's, my grandmother's maiden name, so maybe we're related, but not closely.
Ready? All right. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Cassidy Wedeman. I'm joined here on my right by Justice Mickelson. And we are here to address a significant pedestrian safety concern regarding a primary crossing between Stadium Drive and Woo's Arbor Park Apartments. This crossing is located at the first crosswalk encountered when heading westbound on Stadium Drive. Now, despite it being a critical pedestrian route, it lacks adequate lighting, creating a very hazardous environment for both pedestrians and drivers. This issue is most noticeable at night. Even at close range, pedestrians are barely visible, which will be shown in the pictures provided in your pamphlets. Now, studies show pedestrians struck in unlit areas are more than twice as likely to be killed compared to those in well-lit areas. Now, to improve safety, we are requesting a rapid flashing beacon, otherwise known as an RFB, at this crossing. The estimated cost is $10,000, including labor, materials, and equipment. According to the Federal Highway Administration, RFBs report a 64% driver yield rate compared to that of a 4% baseline. Now, additional lighting improvements may also address our concerns with LED conversions costing around $300 and new streetlights between $2,500 and $4,000. Now, Monmouth's 2027 to 2028 crosswalk improvement projects include a budget of roughly $220,000, which indicates that pedestrian-oriented upgrades are already incorporated into the city's planned capital improvements. Now, the crossing in question aligns closely with these priorities. It is also important to note that municipalities can be held liable for failing to act after being notified of a hazard with limits of up to $879,000 for injury and $1,760,000, excuse me, $1,760,000 for death under the Oregon Tort Claims Act. If the council prefers further analysis, a traffic study could be conducted to measure pedestrian and vehicle volumes, vehicle speeds, yield rates, site distance, as well as crash history to guide the decision-making process regarding our proposal. Given that this process serves as a critical artery for pedestrian traffic with very well-documented hazards arising from inadequate lighting, and considering the demonstrable efficacy of rapid flashing beacons in mitigating such risks, we urge the council to grant attention towards this issue of pedestrian safety and to give deliberate consideration towards our proposal. Thank you. Justice, you want to take it away?
If I could direct your attention briefly just to this first photo on the handout. There is a pedestrian walking out into the crosswalk, and as you can see, they disappear into the trees and everything. It's a legitimate concern for us as we live on this campus, and it's a very heavy traffic flow area. There's a lot of student drivers and students crossing this. So we would appreciate the consideration and the potential for a traffic study if that's not implementable at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I didn't indicate, we'd like to get back to you on this. We will gather information and have someone get back to you. And so I'm going to put this over here. If you want to put an email address or some way for us to contact you, we'd really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And our second comment this evening, Joe Schomburg.
This has to be read to be on, is that right?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Can everybody hear me good? All right. Thanks for having me. My name is Joe Schomburg. I live by Cherry Lane Park here in town. And I've emailed all of you counselors and mayor already and Chief Haynes as well. And I want to thank Chief Haynes and your staff especially for getting back to me and working with me on this. Counselor Carey, you texted me back, and I had a nice conversation with Counselor Lopez yesterday, I believe. So thank you for your time. I'm a little frustrated with the homeless campers in town, as I'm sure a lot of people are. You all got my email, sort of enough said on that. I'm sure you read it. What I'm here to do is propose a couple of ideas, because everybody always complains and nobody has any ideas. So here's one idea. In front of a lot of our parks, like Gentle Woods Park, Cherry Lane Park, which are in great neighborhoods, Mar Court Park, this is like a good spot for homeless people to park their campers because there's no house right in front, although they're across the street. So when I come out, I see them in front of my house. But these parks are closed at night, and it would be fairly easy, I think, to make it so that you can't park in front of these parks at night. Just have no overnight parking in front of the house. That way they can't park there. And or at least your staff would have the ability to give them a ticket for parking there. Another thing that I would recommend is to consider having like a repeat offenders provision in your 72-hour rule. So if these folks are, you know, parking there and using the 72-hour rule, which actually isn't that. It's more like a week, because these folks are parked in front of my house Thursday, I believe, and they're still there when I left the house today. Officer Ladue promised me they'd be towed tomorrow if they're still there. So I thank them for following up on that, but it isn't 72 hours. It's like a whole week. So as a taxpayer, I get up in the morning and go out in front of my house. And I've got three little daughters, and here's this homeless camper parked out in front of my house. I don't know who they are. I don't know how they got to, I don't know where they come from. I don't know anything about them. And it's a threat to the safety of my children, and I don't like it. And so that's why I'm here. The next proposal I have would be, you know, like I said, if you have three times that they've been cited for this 72-hour parking, if maybe that can be reduced to like 24 hours, because clearly they're smart. They understand that they can park there for a while, and then they could leave and move it somewhere else and be somebody else's problem for the next week. And I don't think that's really fair to us as taxpayers. In the old days, citizens would have handled it ourselves. Nowadays, we don't do it like that. We come to the city council meeting, we talk to your staff, we try to work through the, you know, proper channels. But it is frustrating, because as a citizen, I've worked through the proper channels numerous times, and there was really no change. And I'm a little frustrated with that. So I'm here to express that and provide a couple of offers of suggestions. Thanks for your time, folks.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
You got that, Chief. So if you have additional questions, okay. Thank you very much. And Priscilla Cannon.
Ready? My name is Priscilla Cannon. I live on 662 Orchard. I presented pictorial, as I know all of you have not seen, these six vehicles. I know that this is in West Monmouth. I know that none of you live in West Monmouth. I know that you probably haven't driven in West Monmouth. So I took it upon myself and took these pictures today from 8:00 AM until 3:00 PM to these. And I accidentally saw these two later today. So I just took all six of them as of today, between 8:00 and 3:00. Thank you. So I returned from vacation out of state two days ago. As I drove home, I saw two homeless vehicles in my neighborhood. As I drove to some errands this morning, I saw two more vehicles. I decided at that time to take photos of them throughout the day and come tonight to show you in a pictorial way. Because as the manager told me years ago, a picture paints a thousand words. You can know more and see more if you can see it and make a decision. I've sat here every month and seen more and more growth on this. I felt compelled to come and show you all what's happening in West Salem. And maybe if you break out, if you go into some breakout sessions, like a coffee station conversation, executive meeting, to look for a, find a solution to this growing vehicle parking or abandonment, which is the one on Cherry Lane, is an abandonment, because we know that that couple is living in the homeless shelter at 300 Stadium. I've spoken to him. I've also spoken to the manager there. As you know, Portland, Hillsborough, and other cities surrounding our cities to the north are having the same issue at a greater proportion. You must begin to take this serious as the numbers continue to grow. I know that I am daily working with your compliance officer on top of this, because of this growing issue. I know that none of the city council nor the city planners live in this city, in West Salem, West Monmouth. But you should all be aware of what's happening, and I present that tonight. I also present it to my city. You all should be ashamed of not watching out for the many residents and students in West Monmouth. I have a son now attending Woo, and he has often mentioned the vehicles that he's seen near the campus, on both sides of the campus. I've seen one of you hold a sign on Main Street and say, Asian Lives Matter. Our lives matter too. Take that into consideration, that American lives matter. Lastly, vote Christine Drazen. We must make a change now.
Okay. Thank you, Priscilla.
Madam Mayor.
Not going to comment.
Not comment?
Yeah.
I would just like a record of the item presented. That's all.
Oh, yeah. She's leaving that. She, yeah, yep. All right. In our final, we have, it's like we have three that are interested in speaking on the same thing. So if you want a three, come up, grab an extra chair, identify a spokesperson for the group. Your name and residence and what you have for us this evening. Thank you.
Hello, hello. Thank you, guys, for giving us this opportunity to talk to you. My name is Justin. This is Kayla and Cooper. We're here from Heron Point Senior Living Facility. Just want to mention off the bat, we actually had the honor of knowing Donna Cable that was mentioned earlier. She actually was at our facility up until the point of passing. Yes, I can. I've been working at Heron Point for just about two years at this point. And about a year ago, we formed a union. We didn't like how people were being treated and how the staff were being treated, residents. We wanted to make a change. Not a lot has happened in that past year, despite our efforts, which haven't stopped. Mosaic, the company that owns Heron Point, has, at this point, for at least the month of November, refused to bargain with us regarding matters of safety, equipment, staffing, pay, of course. When they initially purchased our facility back in January, 2024, they mentioned to the residents in the first ever meeting that that was their business, not the resident's home. And that stung. That didn't feel good for us staff members. We came here to spread awareness of the situation going on at Heron Point and to also ask for support from our community. Like I said, we've been fighting to get this contract for about a year, and not a single thing has been set in stone. We asked today for your support in actually calling Mosaic. They, we need help. We need help. I'm just going to say it flat out. We are not getting anywhere. It's not enough for 33 out of 35 staff members to vote yes on the union, to even get them to the table. I don't, we don't have a lot of time left, but I'm going to pass it off to my person.
So I'll give you a little condensed version of what I wrote, because I thought I had three minutes. Like you said, we formed this union earlier this year. It was back in January that we officially won our union. And since then, the denial of proposals around things like safe staffing ratios have left shifts where there was two med techs, two caregivers, for 65, nearly 70 residents some days. If that was your guys' parents, I truly hope that you would reach out in support with us to understand this is not safe for anybody. And more than anything, we just come here to ask for your guys' support and for you guys to reach out to this company so that we can hopefully get some change in this community that impacts everybody in a really positive way.
Five seconds. I'm sorry, Cooper.
It's okay. No problem.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, if you want a response, we, I've got an email here, it looks like for Kayla. If that's okay, we can just send any response to her. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all three for the work you do for our community members and for being here.
Thank you.
Can I give you guys this? This is their contact information.
Yeah, if you give it to our city recorder, she can share that. Thank you. All right. Were there any other comments online, Phyllis, this evening? I didn't see anyone. I didn't receive any, Mayor Coats. Okay. All right. That brings us to a presentation this evening we have with a member, a member of our tree board and our staff support for that. We have Carey, the director of our Power and Light Department. I'm going to hear a little bit about what these volunteers have been up to, which is always a lot.
Thank you for, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Basically, I can tell you that-
Could you introduce yourself for those who don't know you, sir?
Excuse me?
Could you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Gordon Taylor. I'm a resident of Monmouth, and I am the chair of the Monmouth Tree Advisory Board. And mostly, I just have to say thank you for your continued support of the Tree Advisory Board. We have, we are now going into our third year of the Yard Tree Program, which we started a couple of years ago. And so far, it has been a, it has been a real success. We've had, the people who have taken part have been really pleased. We have only, we, we thought we had lost one tree that died last, last summer, but it turned out in the middle of July, it sprouted leaves, in spite of the fact that, you know, it, we thought that it would have been so severely shocked that it had died, but it came back. So other than that, we are, the trees are doing well that we have planted. And we are, we have identified areas where we have not done so well in the past regarding pairing up volunteers with, with board members to get, to get things going. And we are working this year on trying to start earlier and get, get things done in a more timely fashion. But that's about it. Wade, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we did have a fall planting scheduled for November 1st in Madrona Park. But after speaking with Russ Cooper of Public Works, they would like us to help them out, get some trees in around the skate park. So at this week's meeting on Thursday, we'll be discussing that and making a decision on that. And that looks like what we'll be doing for the fall. I think they want four trees there. And then, as Gordon said, yeah, you should see the marketing campaign for the Yard Tree Program much earlier this year. It was pretty condensed last year, and it made things a little hectic. So we're going to spread it out to help with that. And we also still have two vacancies on the tree board. So if you can help get the word out for some volunteers, that would be great.
I have nothing else to add, really. I, that's about it, as far as I know. We, we're just planting trees. That's what we're doing.
Well, I think the important reminder is because we are a Tree City USA, there are things that really we kind of have to do to maintain that status, and we're very proud of that status. And you are a very important part of that, that having the Tree Advisory Board is one of those things. So I guess we could just have you meet once a year and call yourself an advisory board, and we'd meet the minimum criteria. But we're super proud of all the work that gets done and the way it not only builds community, but builds community support. This, some really good innovative stuff. So lots of hard work. So thank you.
This Yard Tree Program was first proposed by Mark Fancy back when he was Community Affairs Director. And we are happy that we were finally able to get it going. And now it's, it's got some momentum, and I think we will be able to continue it in the future. So there are so many houses in the city that really, that don't have trees in their yards, and this should help with that.
And why don't you go ahead and remind everyone what that program is, what we do for those folks?
Well, the city pays 50% of the cost of a tree, up to a certain amount. And for that, and, and then we get volunteers together and we plant the trees in the yards. That's basically how it works. We, we ask people to, to make an application, and then the names of 10, 10 people are picked out of the hat, and those are the people who get trees. And the first year, we had barely enough to, we had barely enough applicants. But last year, we had more than enough applicants, and I expect that this year, there'll be, I hope, I'm hoping it will be better this year.
Yeah, I'd like to add that we, the, the choice of the tree is not unlimited to the participant. We do give them a list, and we try to keep an onus on native species being available to them to choose so that we're planting trees that are supposed to be here.
Yeah. That's all.
Well, it looks like we have a possible question, comment for you, Counselor McKeel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When should people start watching for the application to come out? I'm assuming it goes in the Monmouth newsletter?
Well, according to Sabre Jewel, there will be a preliminary notice of it in the next utility bill.
Thank you.
Wire.
Basically, Carol, the timeline is January, this apply for a tree. And that gives us time to sort through who's getting what tree and assign board members to the recipients and, and, you know, help work through that process. And I want to also call out Western Oregon University Athletic Department. Randy Lytton, the AD, has, I will contact her and say, we need 20 volunteers and 40 will show up. So we always have a very good crew of willing young people to dig holes on a wet spring day. So it's, it's been a good program. It's working out. I think the only area that has, if there is one, that has been a problem, a few people didn't understand the 50-50 split on cost. And so that's going to be a point of emphasis this year is, and we're, we're looking at possibly needing to raise the maximum that the city's going to put in, but we have not made that decision yet. Trees are getting more expensive, just like everything else. So thanks.
Counselor Carey.
Thanks, Gordon. You guys do a great job, and I'm sure Wade provides a great leadership for you. You know, we've been, we've had the tree board, and it's been active for a long time. And the focus has been planting new trees, filling in gaps. Now we've extended to the yards, which I think is a good idea. Has there been any consideration about identifying trees that need maintenance? Perhaps pruning, perhaps removal, and replacement? I mean, we've got a lot that we've planted. There's a lot in the, in the community. And, you know, there's, there's some that have gotten away from us. And I'm wondering if that's part of what you might do. Yes, hi. You asked exactly the same question the last time I was in here, and it's, it's a, it's a good question. I don't know that, I, I don't know that the tree board has, has the ability or the, you know, I, I just don't know how the, the tree board would go about maintaining these trees, you know, pruning them and the rest of it. I, that's, it just gets into an area that I know nothing about. We basically are volunteers to, to plant these trees. We basically are volunteers to, to plant these trees. But, I mean, you're right, if, if there's, if there is a, a tree that needs to be taken care of and is really a danger to the public, then I suppose the, the Public Works would, would be involved. And we could possibly help, but I, other than that, I just really don't know how, how to go about that. But it's, again, it's, I'm not, uh, by saying that you had asked the question when, the last time I was in here, I did not mean to put you down for that because it's an excellent, it's an excellent question. And I don't know exactly how to answer it.
Well, it, it's a bit of a preview for next year when you come in.
He said it's a preview for next year.
Well, you know, you're right. I, I don't know, I wouldn't expect, um, you know, our, uh, running around with loppers and that kind of thing. But it might be, there could be some evaluation done and, and pass that on to Public Works. It might rise to the level of, of requiring us to, you know, hire an arborist to, um, you know, to, to clean some of this up. I, I, I'm with you. I don't know the answer to that. And it's probably housed in a couple of our different departments. But, um, I, I think it's, it's a worthy one. To have a lot is good, to have a lot of good ones is better.
Yeah. I think it was a crepe myrtle that you were referring to the last time, yeah, that there, those trees have a tendency to, you know, put out a lot of, a lot of, they tend to be bushes, basically, some of them. Some of them are, are made to be, you know, single, single trunk trees. Others are really more like shrubs. And unless they are taken care of and pruned regularly, they, they turn into this kind of messy situation.
Yes, Councilor Oberst, if you don't know.
And one of the pieces to our agreement with people who take trees from the tree planting program is that they agree to take care of the tree long-term, including pruning it and whatever other care it needs. As far as other trees that might be identified, Councilor Carey, that need help, I think that may be beyond the bandwidth of this, uh, this group. That said, I think all of us are observant enough, and when I say all of us, I mean all of us, that if we see a tree that we believe is a danger to the community, a quick call to Public Works will have it assessed. And if need be, uh, request made the property owner to take that tree out. I know we had, uh, a house in my neck of the woods that had three pretty much or completely dead European birch trees in the yard that went away. And I think Public Works made a request on that one. So, uh, it can't, it can happen, John. Um, I just think it's probably outside the, the bandwidth of this group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our business agenda this evening. It looks like we have a, need to consider a supplemental budget. So, right away, putting our new finance director to work, making these changes. Yep, Barbara, do you want to come up too? Thanks, Amy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having me. Joining me are Suzanne and Barbara, and these requests are related to their departments. And so I brought them along to answer any questions that we might have. But our request is fairly straightforward. They've both been offered grants subsequent to us passing the budget. So we need supplemental permission from you to add this expenditure activity to our budget. So the one is from the Oregon Tourism Commission. That one's in the amount of $49,660. For that one, we'll need to provide a match in the amount of about $7,000. About $2,400 of that will be Suzanne's time that she contributes in kind. And then we have the AARP grant, and that one is in the amount of $3,000. That one doesn't have a match component, so it's just straight money coming to the city. All the information is in your packet, so I'm not gonna over explain. Mainly, I'm just gonna open it up to any questions you may have.
Councilor McKeel.
I think this is very simple. I move adoption of Resolution Number 2020, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026, and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries.
Second.
All right, thank you, Councilor McKeel for the motion and Councilor Lopez for the second. Are there any questions, Councilor Carey?
Uh, no question, but just to identify that this, uh, both of these meet, uh, one of our values, our, our D E I value. And in particular, the equity and the inclusion. This, this deals with those that are lacking in mobility or have challenges in mobility, uh, the aging population. And this is an opportunity for us to better engage them, uh, in, in our community. So, it, it's, it's not only just a good idea, it also fits our values and, and fits the things we're trying to get done. Thank you for it.
Well noted. Thank you, Council. Yep, we definitely appreciate, uh, grant money to do this kind of work and the partnership of AARP, particularly that. Thank you, Barbara, um, our senior center director for that, because you have really done a great job of bringing our work to their attention and them supporting our work and just these little bits. So, any other questions or comments? All right, Phyllis, if you could do the roll call, please, on Resolution Number 2020, adopting a supplemental budget.
Councilor McKeel?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Aye.
Councilor Ridgeway?
Aye.
Councilor Oberst?
Yes.
Councilor Carey?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
And this evening, we have one work session item. And that is, um, a, a report that we had asked for when we considered, uh, in the 24-25 budgeting process, asking, um, our community for additional ways to support our law enforcement and public safety offerings in our community. And, um, when we passed the public safety fee, we did ask for an annual report on what, what we're getting, what that brings us, how that supports the kinds of concerns that we've heard here tonight, among others. So, I'm talking because I couldn't figure out of all of you in the room. Looks like we have Sergeant Strack joining us at the table. And, uh, yes, Lieutenant Olafson also, so. They're both on the, on the job tonight, so.
You'll have to bear with us, we're trying to get this connected so we can project the slideshow up there. If not, I'll just have you guys follow along in the ones you got in your packet.
Speaking closely, and I just, because it's easier for the recording and online, even if we can hear you. Thanks. We do have a PowerPoint. We're getting ready.
Okay. Well, I guess I will just begin and if you can follow along in your packet, that'd be fantastic. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I am Sergeant Mike Strack and I work for the police department. And what I have for you is our 2025 public safety fee report. So the purpose of this is just to provide an update of the first year of the public safety fee. And what we want to explain is what did we get with the fee, report on the achievements and impacts made possible by the fee, and the staffing levels and improvements, um, that we have seen so far. So just to remind you guys, when we go back to when we were talking about the public safety fee, we had some goals in mind. Those goals were to, uh, maintain the 15th officer position and add a 16th, uh, and to maintain that funding level for, for that staffing. Also maintaining a vehicle purchasing schedule to replace aging vehicles. Making our C S O full-time for more consistent code enforcement. And providing more officers on the road for call handling and traffic enforcement. So, uh, how did we put that to work? Well, we've added three new officers to our staff, uh, which brings us to 16 sworn as we speak. Uh, first is Officer Colin Daniel and Officer Hector Del Bosque. They are both brand new to policing. Officer Daniel was our 15th spot and is currently working as a solo officer. He's made it through his academy field training and is now working on his, on his own. He went solo around August of this year. Officer Del Bosque is currently in the academy and is set to graduate in mid-December. Our third officer is Officer Michael Stevenson. He was hired after Sergeant Buckholz retired. And Officer Stevenson was previously a deputy with the Polk County Sheriff's Office. And he came over to work with us and he has around 10 years of experience. He also has some expertise that he brings along with him. He's a traffic crash reconstructionist, a DUI instructor, a drug recognition expert, and a newly certified drone operator. What's that? I know, right? Some more benefits, so as you know, we did have the retirement of Sergeant Buckholz and so we made some movements within the supervisor ranks. Detective Cruz Arrozco was promoted to patrol sergeant and he's been with the department for nine years. Sergeant Justin Reynolds was moved into our detective supervisor position and he's been with us for 15 years. And then I was moved into the support sergeant role, uh, and I've been with us for 18 years. The next part, I just wanted to kind of bring forth and tell you guys a little bit what each patrol, uh, well, what each supervisor, um, kind of division does. The patrol sergeants, they supervise the aid officers. We have one on day shift, one on swing shift, and they rotate every four months. They approve reports, uh, they do our use of force and pursuit reviews, they handle citizen complaints, they handle our reserve program and field training program, uh, they do employee evaluations, and they do the overall supervision when out in the field. Our detective sergeant supervises two detectives. They manage the cases for detectives and keep a close eye on the case manager for patrol. They are a part of a multidisciplinary team, both for children and adults, where they work with other agencies, mental health, the schools, parole and probation. Um, and they do kind of the, the bigger cases that all the agencies can help out on. They also do threat assessments. They're the school liaison. They are part of the major crimes team and they handle all the DHS cross-reports. And then there's my position. So as we go through, uh, what my role is in my position, I want everyone to, uh, think about the last two slides. As I go down all the things that I'm gonna be doing, if you add that to what the patrol and the detective supervisors are doing, imagine before the public safety fee and how we restructured, all of this was being handled by supervision in general and we had to divvy it out. So as you can imagine, with that many things to be done, uh, we didn't have a whole lot of time for patrol sergeants to be out on the road and closely supervising our officers. Yes, they would be out with the officers on major calls, but they're not out there on the smaller calls. They're not really out there doing traffic alongside those officers. So this position was centered around taking the majority of the tasks so that those supervisors can supervise their people. The detective sergeant is more involved in running cases with their detectives. And patrol sergeants are out in the field, not just for calls, but they are running traffic and they are involved in those smaller calls. This ultimately is creating better coverage on the road without adding two more additional officers. We're adding those with our supervisors and providing more thorough investigations for our community. Um, so, uh, some of the things that, um, has been put onto my plate is I am now, uh, supervising our C S O. So now we have more of a one-on-one supervision with the C S O, so we can track and really give him somebody that can bounce ideas off of and try to figure out how we can maximize our ordinances with our enforcement. Because that's something that I feel has been lacking without a full-time C S O and a full-time supervisor for that spot. Previously, we would supervise that with whoever was the day shift supervisor and with all the other things they had to do that usually would get pushed off onto the back burner. Have more structured supervision and guidance for our records division. We have two records and, um, it just gives, uh, one point of contact for those people. So that way we can make sure everything's running smoothly in our records department. Also having constant oversight on the evidence room operations. I will be, uh, supervising the evidence room and making sure that all of those things, we're following the proper procedures and doing the recommended or, uh, the, the audits yearly and everything that we have to do. Quartermaster, which includes equipment and uniforms. The main point of, uh, contact for ordering to streamline processes. Building maintenance to keep facilities operational. Grant writing to help try to support the budget. Community engagement and fleet maintenance. So just going a little bit farther into that building maintenance, when, when you hear that, you kind of think of the big things, right? Well, we've never really had anybody do the small things. So it's as simple as replacing a leaking sink, diagnosing an A C unit, unclogging sinks. Our landscaper was asking us for a while to have a gate in our fence on Catron so he can blow the leaves out onto the street for pickup. Because before, he had to go all the way across the property and put it in our parking lot, which was very difficult when we had people parking there. So I was able to install a gate on the fence, getting carpets cleaned. I mean, the list can go on, but I think, I think you guys get the point on that one. Grants, um, we've never really had anybody that's been dedicated to writing grants. Um, I've been in this position for about two months and I've submitted four grants so far, receiving one. Um, and the other three are kind of more of the long-term ones that take a lot more process than just applying and then getting accepted. The grant we did receive, though, um, allows us to purchase one, if not two more, of our restraint wrap systems that we deploy out in the field for combative suspects. And it is to minimize injury to them and minimize injury to officers. And it, you know, it, it keeps them restrained to a point where it keeps them in a seated position. It allows them to breathe and it allows us to have control over that person, no matter what they're doing at the time. We're also hoping to get a training wrap so we can consistently do training with that device and keep our officers at the peak of, of being able to use that. Equipment and uniforms, uh, it's not just ordering equipment, tracking equipment and ordering uniforms. It's also organizing an inventory in our equipment room. So that way, we know what we've got and, um, we, we are ready for whatever occasion might arise. Also, our Sally Port, as we all know, when you have a garage, things accumulate. And so if you don't have someone looking over that stuff and, and getting rid of things that we don't necessarily need to hold on to anymore, we now have that. And then I want to touch on fleet too. Fleet, uh, it's not just making sure we get oil changes, right? It's obviously tracking maintenance, but it's also ordering and building patrol cars, which is, which takes a significant amount of time when we need to do that. So with the public safety fee in there, we were, uh, to get back on a purch, a vehicle purchasing schedule. So we were able to get two vehicles this year. In your packet, you can see one was a full patrol build and one was an admin car. So we've been on a vehicle plan where we try to recirculate vehicles every 10 years. Patrol cars are driven far more than a personal car and it's the officer's office. The cars, since the cars serve as an office, it's a 10-hour shift and some of our cars are doubled up. This means they're being used every day. It's important to stay on the schedule because when we're down a vehicle due to issues or even maintenance, other cars are driven more, which creates more issues. This is a problem that compounds very quickly. And if you start holding on to old vehicles that start needing more maintenance, you start getting into issues where you don't have enough vehicles to even supply for people that are on shift. We do generally, uh, try to move older vehicles, you know, as they start to age. We try to move them into roles such as detectives, so we can try to prolong them longer. Um, and then getting that, whenever we get the newer vehicles, they go straight to patrol because that's the lifeblood of what we do. So with the public safety fee, it was allowing us to catch up on our vehicle schedule where we replaced two vehicles this year. One was sitting at 12 years old and the other one was at 11. And we were starting to put quite a bit of money into keeping those running. One was sitting at twelve years old and the other one was at eleven. And we were starting to put quite a bit of money into keeping those running to stay in the rotation. So I said it's time-consuming to manage the fleet. So I had pictures in your packet of the inside of the vehicles. We have specialized equipment and a lot of time is spent on figuring out layouts depending on the type of vehicle we get, because every vehicle has different things that fit into it. And some of the equipment can be reused in new builds and some can't. So this equipment in the vehicles, it's expensive. Yes, it does break. But a lot of the time is spent maintaining that equipment and quickly replacing it if it goes down, because if it goes down, that means that car is not being used on patrol. Which then in turn is putting strain on our other vehicles. So it's good to have someone that can quickly react to that stuff and get on it and get it replaced as soon as possible. The equipment is vital for our patrol functions. You know, we have our mobile printers in there, which are used for our ticket writing system. We've got our computers that is our dispatch system and how we communicate with other officers and agencies. And then obviously our radars for traffic enforcement. Again, it's the officer's office space and the builds do reflect that. So next for personnel, with the public safety fee, we moved our CSO position to full time. So now we have ordinance enforcement Monday to Friday, eight to five. This has been beneficial not only in a CSO presence, but follow-up and enforcement. So some of the benefits we've been seeing so far since moving CSO Ladue to full-time animal adoptions. Things that we don't think about. The Humane Society stopped taking animals from law enforcement agencies. So we were starting to see that we were keeping dogs because no one would claim them and then we were holding on to them for a really long time. CSO Ladue was able to start an adoption program for dogs that were not claimed at our kennels. And so far, he's done six successful adoptions. And ones that weren't fully adopted, but people held on to to not have them put in our kennels. He works with a few nonprofits in the area to help Rehome and provide resources to those people and/or animal owners who are struggling. RVs, as everyone knows, he's been actively keeping eyes on RVs, trying to make sure they stay within the city ordinance. And he's been working on the towing of RVs, which one, it's very hard to find tow companies that will want to come out and do that because it's specialized equipment. And it's also very expensive for us to be able to tow those. He is also working and is constantly working on trying to find other avenues of how we can deal with the RV problem that is also in line with state law. Speed trailer, since going to full-time, he's been deploying it pretty much every week, at least for a week at a time, and it's been deployed around thirty-six times. He keeps a list of locations that have been requested for the speed trailer and he will just rotate through those every time it gets brought back to the PD. He plugs it in, charges it up over the weekend and tries to put it back out. If someone calls in with an immediate request, he will then put it there and then go back to his list into a rotation. So it's constantly being deployed. Again, with animals, he does take care of dogs. If we ever do take them into the kennels, he has to feed, water, make sure they're being cleaned up after and making sure they're in good health. And he also maintains the kennel facilities down by my net. He started working with brands to take trailers and other larger items to the dump so they don't sit on the city streets. We were trying to figure out ways to do that and he actually started working with them and they were very cordial and willing to work with CSO Ladue to to make those things happen. He also has begun utilizing other city departments if he comes across issues that arise outside of his ordinance scope with like the building department and and such. We are also looking at transitioning part of his duties to our houseless liaison. And we felt like this is a good fit because he's out there contacting a lot of these people that could benefit from resources. So his duties would be to be connecting people with resources, trying to keep them engaged in resources and also we have a list of addiction services in case anybody wants to try to take advantage of that. So that will be something that he will be spending his time on. And then in your packets, there's a there's a nice graph there for community service officer. It tracks the number of ordinance violations. For it's month by month for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. As you can see, when we had a part-time CSO, our numbers were sort of right around thirty. It took a very big drop when we lost one CSO and transitioned to another. And then if you see where it says full-time CSO in January, our number drastically rose and has stayed consistently higher. And is maintaining a good number because he's here Monday through Friday and he's consistently out there doing work. So connecting with the community. So there's a list of different community outreach, community events that we do in your packet. So this is just a list of what we have and what we will be involved in for this year. If you look at the duties and expectations of officers on a normal day-to-day basis. I feel like it's pretty impressive, an agency of our size is able to do so much outside of our actual walls. And this is a testament to the officers and the people we hire and their dedication to being part of the community. Since our last hiring process, we've seen the benefits of adding a mid-shift for more coverage. We've had more people actively engaging in community events due to not having to consistently cover patrol shifts due to illness, time off and so forth. Where we used to have only one or two officers volunteer or come out for community events, we've been seeing a lot higher numbers of that because people really do want to engage with the community. And they feel like they can do that because they don't feel like they've been already working overtime shifts on their weekends or they worked a fourteen-hour shift and they're like, ah, I want to come in, but I'm tired. With that, we even added more things that we've done this year. Adulting one oh one, I don't know if any of you guys have heard that. It was a new thing this year with Kings Valley High School. Basically, they wanted to start a program. It's a pilot program where they have different community people come in and teach the outgoing seniors some life lessons. So I was asked to be a part of that and I taught the kids how to interact with officers on a traffic stop and what to do if you were in a traffic accident. They had someone teaching them how to change oil, change a tire, financing, how to make a budget, doing all these things. And then at the end of the the event, they let us all have lunch with the kids and they were able to ask us whatever questions they wanted. Super successful. And I think they're trying to bring that to all the other high schools within Polk County, because it went really well and there was really good feedback from the students. We also worked with the central CTE classes for their criminal justice program. We partnership, we had a partnership with Independence Police Department and we were able to have the kids come in and we were able to teach them how to do a traffic stop, how to use stop sticks, the spike strips. DUI investigations, criminal investigations. They got to do the Milo simulation training. It was a really good time and it really allowed us to connect with kids in our community. We were asked to be a part of the DHS, the Department of Human Services Interview Board, to pick some of their new DHS caseworkers. We were asked to provide TASER training for parole and probation. The city hosted the tall cop event and we were able to get most of our officers to that event and that was a really good turnout. And then we also partnered with Polk County Agencies and were a part of the domestic violence sweeps that happened just last month. So next, we're going to go into the patrol functions and that's where the graphs come up for you guys. I did change the order, so I will tell you which one I'm looking at so you guys can look at the right one. And before we get into the the graphs, I do want to say, you know, yes, we're in the first year of the public safety fee. But we haven't really seen or realized the full potential of having a full fifteenth and sixteenth officer because like I said, Officer Daniel just went solo by himself August of this year. So it's only been a couple of months. But we still wanted to provide these graphs and numbers just so you guys get an understanding of where we're at. So in the future, you guys have something to compare that to. So the first one I'm looking at is the one that says reports taken. So this graph shows the number of reports taken month by month for two twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And this graph shows that our number of reports have steadily risen over the last year and will likely continue to rise. The public safety fee has allowed us to obviously increase our staffing with the fifteenth and future sixteenth officer. And it's allowing us to move forward with the rising numbers and provide a higher level of service to our community despite the increasing calls for service. The next graph I'm looking at is the self-initiated calls. It might be a couple down from where you're at. So self-initiated calls. This graph, self-initiated calls are calls that are generated from officers observing or proactively trying to find potential issues. So when we talk about officer responsibilities, we respond to calls for service. And within that duty, things are kind of prioritized. We have nine-one-one calls. We have our non-emergency calls for service. We have the time it takes to document our reports. We have follow-up investigations and then we have self-initiated activity. We also understand that self-initiated activity is the high priority for the community because that's what everybody sees. They want to see officers out on the road. They want to see us doing traffic stops. They want to see us engaging with members of the community. With increased staffing, if you look at the graph, we're able to see that officers are able to do more self-initiated activity because the workload is shared. So on the graph, I highlighted where right around July, August, when Officer Daniel went solo. Our number of self-initiated activity actually spiked above the line and then has stayed consistently above that line. With the sixteenth future officer being trained and going solo, I only imagine that that number is going to stay higher and potentially go up because we're going to have more officers being able to be out there and spreading the load and being able to go and do more than just take calls for service. The next graph is traffic stops. This is basically just like the self-initiated activity graph. Traffic stops are part of our self-initiated activity. We pulled that data out of the self-initiated just so we can show that even if we pull that out, the graph looks almost the same. And so, yes, before it was consistently lower, but we also were dealing with officer injuries. We were dealing with paternity leaves. We were dealing with really maybe eleven, twelve officers. And as soon as we've got those bodies back into fifteenth officer solo, that number rose again and has stayed consistently above that line from twenty twenty-four. The next one I'm looking at is supplemental reports. So supplemental reports are additional reports officers add to an original call that was handled. These types of things include follow-up investigations, going out and getting video footage, neighborhood canvases, additional interviews and arrests that could not be made at the time we were handling the call. The number of supplemental reports are directly correlated to the amount of time officers have to do these activities. So we'll say in twenty twenty-four, officers, when they're working by themselves on a shift and they are going call to call, they don't have as much time to just go out and do all of those follow-ups all the time. A lot of the times, you're asking other officers for help on different shifts that might not know exactly what all is going on in that report, or it gets pushed to a detective and detectives already have a full caseload as it is. When our staffing is increased and you can kind of see a little bit before the fifteenth officer went solo, but right around the time he came onto the road in his FTEP process. Calls for service are more spread out and giving officers more time to dedicate the time to do the necessary follow-ups for more thorough investigations, which are leading to better service for the community. And then the last graph I have on here is arrests charged. So this graph is just showing the number of arrests for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And I believe this is going to show that, you know, with better staffing, our numbers have gone up and are maintaining a more consistent level. On the graph, you can see there was a spike in twenty twenty-four in October. I believe that was due to a heavy number of officers doing our traffic grants. Because when we were doing more traffic enforcement, we were getting subsequent arrests from those, i.e. our DUI grant or even just if we write a citation for driving while suspended, that's going to get listed under as an arrest charge. So I think that's what shows that spike. Outside of that spike, our numbers have gone up and are staying more consistent. So with improved staffing. So when we talk about maintaining the fifteenth and adding the sixteenth spot. We were able to implement a mid-shift and the mid-shift runs from noon to ten PM. So before we just had a day, a swing and a grave. And now with a mid-shift. We're able to have two officers on at a time in the busiest day of day shift, which is generally between two and five. And the busiest part of swing, which is about five to nine. Okay? And so with that mid-shift, they are on there. So now we have two officers on plus a supervisor four days of the week. Not only does this help with coverage, but it also helps with our scheduling for vacations and sickness. We have one officer on leave right now and our mid-shift was able to just be moved to cover that spot without even touching or trying to reconfigure the schedules or extending shifts for officers to be working with one person on. It also helps to minimize the need for OT shifts, which not only helps our budget. But with officer wellness and not having officers working long days or coming in and working on their weekends and not having that time to decompress. FMLA and injuries. We had an instance early on in the year where we had two officers and a supervisor that were involved in a use of force incident and were all out on injury for a period of time. Losing three spots was very detrimental to us. And what we had to do is we had to actually take the detective sergeant and the detectives out of investigations and have them be plugged into patrol functions, which I mean, we can't just stop working investigations. So you had to try to balance handling calls and working more complex investigations. We also had two employees go on paternity leave, so we lose them for a period of time. And with the public safety fee. It's allowing us, even with just one shift extra now, it's allowing us to absorb those blows a lot better and still maintain good officer wellness and not burning anybody out. The ability to manage court with better staffing, as noted before with the increase in arrests, this leads to more officers going to court and grand jury. This can be a resource drain because court can take multiple days for either trial or just simply officers needing to prepare for trial. Which means they have to go to the DA's office, talk with them, and that's going to take time from them off the road. Or if we can't cover the staffing, they have to come in outside of their work shift to be able to do that. So with the increased staffing, we're able to cover the road better, allowing those officers the important time to prep for court, which leads to better outcomes at the at the conclusion of those trials. We've also had some larger investigations that we've handled and we were able to handle them in-house because with better staffing, we're able to spend more time and conduct more thorough investigations with less downtime. Bringing it back, I'm going to keep bringing it back to traffic grant participation and community engagement because that is probably the biggest thing we've seen. And since I deal with those on a on a daily basis. And those are kind of what I I had is we're having more people want to come out and do those traffic grants. We're having more people come out and do the community engagement and it's just showing that it's working. Training, when we send people to training, it's sometimes a day, but it can sometimes be a week. Again, with with more staffing, we're able to slide someone over instead of reconfiguring a whole schedule to allow them to go to more trainings and have better trained officers on the road. Morale has gone up. And then it allows us to focus on officer wellness. We as an agency want to take care of our people and provide as much support to them to get through this long career as possible. With better staffing, we can better intervene early with potential issues and take someone off the road and provide them that support without and take someone off the road and provide them that support without feeling like we have to strain other employees to fill that void. Work life balance is important for officers and their families, and it's important to us and minimizing unnecessary overtime will ultimately help reduce officer burnout. We've been able to implement a new program. It's called LFTA. It's a program that allows us to be more efficient within the department. It is a one program place where we have our citizen complaints, use of force, pursuits, field training, field training and early intervention stuff, all all in one spot. So that way we're not trying to think like, oh, where's the form for this? Where's the form for that? Did we do all the things we need to do for tracking purposes and everything? It's all in one spot and is tracked through this program. Earlier I talked about Officer Stevenson being a drone operator. We now are having the staffing level where we are in the early stages of trying to develop a drone program where we have one operator and we're working on a second. So that's exciting for us. We also have a patrol e bike that we brought out for the Fourth of July. The reason I bring that one up is because with improved staffing, what our plan is to do with that is we've always wanted to have downtown bike patrol. But we've never been able to do that because all we usually will have one person on a shift at a time and we can't have that one person on a bike. We have to have someone in a car that can respond in an emergency and or take someone to jail if that is necessary. So so with more people on shift, we can then look at in the spring, summer, fall months, maybe getting someone on a bike and actually spending time in downtown, interacting with community members, interacting with business owners and actually having that presence down there and make people, you know, get to know us a little bit better. So in summary, the public safety fee has allowed us to maintain that fifteenth officer position. We've hired for the sixteenth, which gets us closer to that full staffing level. We've been able to catch up with our vehicle scheduling by purchasing two new vehicles. We've been able to get more participation for community events and traffic grants. We've been able to participate in new community outreach and agency partnerships and improve overall morale. It's also not lost on us that this was a big ask to the community. Any small fee is a lot of money right now to every household and we understand that. But we truly believe that this has made a huge impact on the service we can provide to this community. And we do want to thank everybody for the support and thank you guys as well. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Strack. Woo. All right. A lot of great stuff in there. I really appreciate it. It's it's great to hear that we are staffed. I I'm where Counselor Carrie and I got on council at the same time. And we went to our first budget process and listened to all the reports and did all the things and said, when do we get to talk about adding police officers? That was like, we both thought that was important and they were like, oh, well, we're too far down the budget process for you to even ask that question. Which led to a change in our budget process where we start in January telling about what priorities we have as a council. But I'm I'm this is the first I can we're still understaffed compared to our competitors. I mean, that was the one thing we learned in doing the research for this fee, but this has been a huge improvement. So particularly appreciate that and the work we're doing to maintain the assets we have. Like that's that's important too. And trying to run those cars into the ground isn't great for any of us as far as a use of wise use of public money. I know there's a lot of questions and maybe some specifics about some of the things that you talked about. So anybody, anything we want to discuss? Yes, Counselor Ridgeway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Sergeant Strack for the presentation. Really interesting and I I think I can speak for everybody on the council that the money that's been allocated has been put to good use. There's efficiencies that that demonstrate this isn't something that that your agency takes lightly, that you really want to make the most out of it. I I like the the comment about longevity, that you have some officers that are that are sticking around and in a lot of agencies or cities our size or or thereabouts, sometimes struggle with keeping keeping good officers on staff and making sure that they have a career that they can build locally and without having to to jump ship into a larger agency. So that speaks well into the the culture that's been created among the police department. And, you know, in addition to to all the other tangible things, that's just one of those things that that oftentimes gets overlooked is just the quality of the members that you have. I've got that just speaks to the health of the the agency. So that will continue, I believe. You spoke a lot to the the what the dollars are used for and the why and and why that that should continue and that was convincing. My concern kind of going forward, not necessarily something you can you can address tonight, but is the how. How can we continue to to maintain this without it being an add on to the budget or an extra fee or an asterisk? It needs to be something that we prioritize with our with our budget process and I believe should be a a bigger discussion that we have as a budget committee. So we can continue this and it's sustainable. It's not just for the next couple of years or the next, you know, let's reevaluate in a two or three year period. So I'm hopeful that we can have those discussions and find a way to we can continue the the progress that's been made. I'd really like to see those, the full impact of those additional officers. And it's exciting to see that now we're up to sixteen. We will be shortly and have everybody off of FTEP and not utilizing the the FTO that's sitting in the seat next to them. So that's exciting coming up. I like the ideas that that are being used as far as the extra patrols, the e bike downtown. I think there's there's some some opportunities there. Lots of engagement with with community partners. To address some of the concerns we we heard about tonight, the more full utilization of the C S O to monitor those derelict vehicles and make sure that everyone's maintaining compliance with our city code and state law. Yeah, hopefully that's something that can also be improved upon. I know there's there's concerns that are brought up throughout the year, but sometimes it comes to a head and we hear about it more loudly and clearly at nights like tonight. So any I guess maybe this isn't this isn't the venue to discuss that, but is there an impact that we might see regarding more availability to for the C S O to intervene in some of those parking situations?
So we we are having conversations about that. And one of the things that I'm going to be working on is trying to dive into the city ordinances and either working with you guys to maybe clean up some language or 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 try to figure out how within the state law we can we can operate there. But one of the things that we've just changed with our C S O is when we have RVs that we know who are in it, know we know who they belong to, immediately sticker in those things as soon as they park and making sure they stay within that three days. Like I said, it's very expensive to tow these and to find agencies that will come out and tow them. So, you know, we want to hold that line, obviously, but we also need to be looking at other possibilities of what we can do that we don't need to rely on other entities to be able to provide specialty services, if that makes sense.
Yes. So I guess is it, in your view, is it more of a financial, a budgetary issue or a legal constraint that would affect whether those vehicles can be towed? Thank you.
Yeah, I we had a good discussion about this and these towing companies used to be happy to tow vehicles. And now they charge, especially for the RV types, up to five thousand dollars to take them because they often are contaminated, there are things. So we would have to consider increasing our budget significantly to be able to address actually getting them towed. And I think it's also interesting to note, we've mentioned the seventy two hours and we know that some of them know that and and Donovan's really good about running them around town and keep reminding him. I I've done some research. For example, I think Salem has a week. They've got that a vehicle can stay in the same spot for a week. And Dallas, I believe, has twenty four hours. So I said, gosh, how do you enforce that? Do you have, you know, a couple of people doing that? Well, I'm not sure they're able to enforce that, right? So they can, if you have to balance that out between what we can afford to focus on. And if we if we change our ordinance, we got to make sure we can enforce it. And so having extra people to track that. I, these are horrible. This this situation, I mean, these RVs, we didn't have this five years ago, four years ago. And I, we know with the situation with funding for homelessness and things, that this is going to continue to be a huge problem in our community. And in every community, it's not just us. And the impact on neighbors and neighborhoods is, it is very frustrating. And right now, you're right, working within the law is great. And if we've got great solutions from our partners and vibrant communities, we want to be listening to those and trying to figure that out and working with our state legislators, which we are doing to say, how how can cities manage this? The these populations and the difficulties they're facing and they're going to continue to face. And what can we do to support them, especially if the supports and those partners that we've worked with aren't able to fund as many programs? It's going to be a very challenging time. Couple other things I just wanted to comment. I don't, and I don't know if any of you noticed this. We get in our weekly Friday report from the manager a list of all the activity that officers do every week. And not many of you may be in this room actually get the Polk, Tommiser Observer on on newsprint, but I do. And it's in there as well. And one thing I really appreciate particularly in the I D Mizer Observer, because other agencies report as well. I really like the way ours are laid out because it starts off with the type of service call, right? And if you look at that and you notice that our calls for service are, there's a lot of them that are calls for emotionally disturbed people, that are calls for folks who are are struggling and they don't know who else to call, it seems, and they call us. And the fact that we can respond to those and help those people for their safety and the safety of others in our community is huge, but it takes a lot of time, we know. And that I really appreciate that because I really think it's telling the story of what you all do and how it has policing has changed so much over the years. And the unique struggles that we have in our community in some ways and the people that we are helping and serving by being available to take those calls. So I just, that's an observation I've had as well, but I hope people look at that and really understand what what challenges you face out there. Counselor Oberst.
And I'd like to just follow up with that. I've always had a healthy respect for what you all do. And when I started getting those police reports every week and the managers report, my jaw dropped with the stuff I didn't know you dealt with, that you deal with on a nonstop basis. It's astounding what you all do. And I wish everybody in the community could sit down and read a few of those and really get a feel for what you're doing for us because it's astounding. It's all, it's just amazing.
Counselor Carrie and Counselor Lopez.
And just to note that that when we instituted this, we said, as I recall, that this was, we were a modern police force that just needed a little extra funding in order to be able to act like a modern police force. And by your report tonight, Sergeant, I think I think that's proof positive that you've been given the resources to get started in that direction. I'm guessing when you come back next year, there'll be some tweaks and adjustments to this because you will have found that we could be better efficient here or better efficient there. But it validates the difficult decision that we made a year ago. One of the things that I was particularly glad you mentioned, and you mentioned it near the end. And it talked about the morale and the quality of life for our officers. This, this, you know, your your profession is one that is that is prone towards turnover. You know, people don't stay in it a long time because of a lot of the things that you talked about. You know, the the overtime, the no time to decompress, all of that. It sounds like we're getting to that. And so hopefully we've got happier officers, got officers who want to stay here because they like sort of the the forward thinking, progressive thinking that 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 we're doing. So congratulations to all of you that are involved with that. And one of the things I just want to put on the record and, you know, I think when we get into the budget process, I think we need to have a a good look and a eyes wide open discussion about the use of the public safety fee assistance program. It's not a hell of a lot of money, but, you know, if it's money that that needs to stay where it is, it ought to stay where it is. If it's not being utilized there, then then it ought to go to support the, you know, the general department. But we'll have that discussion when we get into budget. But it but we just all need to remember that that needs to be part of what we talk about. So thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much for the wonderful presentation. I had reviewed the slides ahead of time and you answered most of my questions through through your presentation, which I always always love to see. I will echo my other counselors' comments here in terms of the improvements that this has made to how we police as a city and, you know, really how we show up as a community for the broader community and for our employees, for the 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 police force and the individuals who dedicate their lives to keeping all of us safe. Anytime that we're looking at, you know, at reports like this, right, it's a little bit of a check back. A lot of bit of a check back, right? In this case, this was a new fee and and I think you delivered some of those startup timeframes really well. You communicated that well. This is more of a comment on what I look for in the future. I very much next time I'm going to look for, you know, that evidence of those next steps, right? This first step was kind of getting us back to where where we should have been. But I see a lot of room room to grow. I love hearing about the things that you're talking about in terms of things to come. I'd love to see how we utilize those drones and that drone program, some of the new internal training resources that we have, some of the downtown, downtown bike policing. You know, I love that I see you all out in the community. I see you at community events, giving out Matchbox Cars to kids and things of that nature and building that relationship with the community and building that trust with the community. And so really want to express my appreciation for ensuring that these funds are spent in 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 a way that reflects our values. Values of, you know, holding a vibrant community, keeping safety as a top priority and building, you know, building community through that instead of just enforcement. Couple things that that I do have a couple of questions about as we go in. Oh, before I do that, I'm going to digress for a moment. We all missed out a little bit that we didn't have the PowerPoint up there. There was a fantastic photo of you. I don't know who put that one in there, but it was it was pretty excellent. But but I I'd like to know a little bit more about about the nature of the C S O's work. And I know it conceptually, I think, right? But a little bit more about that increased bandwidth and maybe the nature of and maybe the nature of the calls that they respond to and/or the self-initiated activity in that, right? When we're talking about code enforcement, what does that, what does that actually mean in terms of how someone's spending their time?
So the, the CSO, when we're talking about code enforcement, so he's spending part of his time going out and just looking for ordinance violations, things that have not been reported to us. The other part of that is the calls that come into us regarding lawns and cars and RVs and, and that stuff. He's also responding to animal calls, loose dogs, dog bites. And then if he has to take them over to the kennel and then provide care at the kennels. And then, you know, once he gets all that done, he's doing the follow-ups on those cases and making sure people are staying compliant. And he's not just going out there and saying, hey, cut your grass by next Thursday or you're going to get a citation. We understand a lot of people have different circumstances in their life, right? So he gets to know the people, talks to them and figures out how best we can remediate the situation. So sometimes a long yard might take a little bit longer than like a week to take care of, but that's because we're also trying to set them up with a local church or the FCO center to see if we can get someone out there to cut the grass or get them lawn maintenance for a month. Setting them up with getting dumpsters delivered to their house so they can take care of all the stuff that's at their house. Getting vehicles towed for them if they need that because they can't afford it. Not everybody takes those offers and, and then sometimes we have to turn into the enforcement mode. But a lot of stuff like that takes a lot of time. The reason we feel like there's enough bandwidth for him to get into the, the houseless liaison side of things is because a lot of the people that could benefit from those resources that are not utilized completely, either because people aren't aware of them or people just don't have the means to get on the internet or don't want to make that phone call or don't have the resources to get down to the center. He's already coming into contact with those people. So we feel like he can start utilizing those resources as he makes contacts. When he's driving around, if he sees one of our community members that we know that might be laying on the park bench or something, and that's usually where he stays, he can just stop and have that conversation and offer those resources. We can't force it, but we can offer it. And if you offer it enough times over and over, they might just say yes at some point. So we feel like he's got the ability to be able to do that because even while he's out doing what he's doing, we can add that little piece in there.
Thank you very much. That's, that's really helpful and it, it does indeed sound like a direct reflection of our community values through, through our policing efforts. And one more brief comment to feel entertained at, Madam Mayor. I recognize also that, golly, we're talking about this here because the property tax code in Oregon is broken. Measures five and fifty broke that for us and we're feeling the impacts of that over time. And here in Monmouth, the impacts of that were, you know, were demonstrated pretty heavily in the, the resources that the police department had. The police department was bearing quite a bit of the brunt of that. And so I see in terms of things that you're talking about here, I see a, a bit of a true-up of that. And I do wish that we didn't have to do it via an extra fee. But that's the tool that cities have, cities can revise the tax code. And I'm grateful to have this. If there's one good thing that comes out from it, it's this extra level of report back and insight that we get into how these vital services are being provided. So thank you and thank you very much for the time that you spent putting this together.
Thank you.
I'm going to put one more plug in before Counselor McKeel. For Donovan, our CSO, mentioned that he does work with other departments, city departments in things that are outside his scope. And I, I was in one meeting with him with our building official and talking about real nuisance, more than nuisance properties, really derelict properties and the, how they work together, right? So you see the property or you see the lawn, but there are other issues with the house that might need to come to the attention of the building official, for example. And so there's really, he, he is our eyes out there. He is the one who is on those streets and really getting an opportunity to get to know neighbors and neighborhoods and communicate with them and try to get, because we all know when those things don't get taken care of, that impacts safety, right? That's not only a perception issue, then it, it leads to other activity that's, so getting it ahead of it is really important to us, so. Counselor McKeel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So nice job, Sergeant Strack, I love the report. I actually, and you brought up what I thought was a very interesting aspect of the CSO's job in reaching out and talking with people who are having possibly mental health problems in the city, which was, which is incredible. But I was wondering in the same line, it goes back to, I think, Counselor Oberst about, and I'm looking at the long list of calls that our police officers make. And so many of them are helping people, other people with pretty severe mental health difficulties. And I'm, I'm wondering if we need, and we've brought this up a couple of times in budget and in council meetings, about do we need to explore supporting the police with professional health personnel during those calls? Because you're doing, I think, an amazing job. I've seen officers that do a really good job of de-escalating, talking with folks who are having some difficulties. But it's not necessarily their professional background. And so is that something that we need to be paying attention to? I think I'm, I'm worried that this might, this rate of having mental health difficulties, people with mental health difficulties might increase before it starts going down. And do we need to be addressing that with, with your, with your officers?
I mean, I think it would always be fantastic to be able to have mental health workers with us when we go out on calls. We do have the ability to utilize the MCI T Polk County RAN units that are around with mental health officers. But, you know, it, it's always like, if you want to talk about getting the Cadillac of things and, and being able to do that, absolutely, I would always say, go for it. But you have to look at, does it really affect what we're doing as far as the, the worth of, of how much it would cost to have that going on? And, you know, like you said, I think our officers do a really fantastic job of dealing with those that are suffering from mental health illnesses. And we do currently have resources that, you know, I think with other types of funding could be better utilized other than just looking at potentially adding that on to something specifically here. But that's also outside of my pay grade.
We do have the new, no, sorry. So with that is, I noticed that, I think in the list that there is additional training. Is that another, is that a training area that is being included? Expanding the expertise that you have of working with people with mental health issues?
Yeah, so all of our officers, and I think we're at the point where every single officer has gone through the CIT mental health training program, which is a forty-hour program, which is specifically designed to teach officers how and how to recognize mental health and how to deal with those situations and how to utilize resources as well.
Right. I, I just also wanted to make an observation. Thank you very much, that's very helpful, particularly as we look in a couple of months going into the budget process. And I was looking at the report and I would see these higher numbers of arrests and calls. The immediate assumption was, oh my gosh, so crime is going up in Monmouth. But I think what those numbers really are relating to is how we now have officers who are keeping us safer. So and, and that they are able to be, we have more people taking the action that we need to have happen for safety.
Yeah, so when you, when you look at the numbers, like with the reports taken, yes, they're going up. But that's also, it, it directly correlates to the fact that our officers have more time to not only take the call but document that, the self-initiated and even the arrests. So like the arrests, even if you see an increase in traffic, like the one graph showed, that's going to also increase the arrests because like I, I had mentioned, you know, if we cite someone for a criminal violation or a criminal action in a traffic stop, that's going to count as an arrest. So one could look at it and say, oh my gosh, crime's gone up. But if you look at it, it's just better work being done by the police department to be out there and enforcing those things. So it's just showing that we're working hard and, and we're doing the things that we need to do.
Thank you. Also, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Do you still get to do the OLCC reporting for us?
Yes, you will still send me for that.
You didn't put that on the list, Strack, you didn't put that.
I didn't.
Counselor Ridgway.
Thank you. Just, actually, just one, one add-on to Mayor's observations that there's a lot of good work that's done by the Monmouth Police Department and we capture it and communicate that maybe poorer than we ought to. The Automizer Observer is not a well-read publication. It would be nice if there was a way that we could put some data together to get out to our, maybe in our utility bill insert or some other more visible way to show.
The information should also be on our website.
Oh, we can do the website.
Every week, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, our communication, this person is hearing all this, but yeah, that's, that's great. You're right, I said, not everyone reads the O. And I think, Phyllis, the Friday report goes out to more than just councilors. Isn't there a monthly city manager's report also that community members can receive?
Yes, it's posted on the website too, for people to access it there with the whole report. And I email it to a small handful of people.
Yeah, thank you. So there, there are ways and we just need to let folks know because we are doing great work. I also did want to echo Counselor Ridgway's comment about our ability now to not only keep officers, but internal promotion opportunities. Chief Haynes, you've done a tremendous job of creating pathways to not only respect and honor the work they do, but to keep them with us. And knowing that most of them live in our community, they have students that go to our schools, and they volunteer in so many ways to support this community. I just, I really, really appreciate it. And I love the CTE stuff because maybe we could start a cadet program again someday, so. Yeah, he's, he's nodding, I like it. Yeah, getting youth to understand and appreciate these great careers, especially since we have a really strong criminal justice program at Western Oregon. That's great partnerships. All right, questions or anything you want to see different next time? Counselor Lopez already gave you the, his to-dos. Anything else, Counselor Carey, you want them to hit a Mr. Detail guy? I could ask my detail guy.
In council comments, I'm going to suggest that we have a conversation about how we can engage with the police force and, and provide them guidance and get enlightenment from them on how aggressive we should be on some of these code enforcement issues. But, but I'll get to that, I, it's, it's all good. So proud of you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Lieutenant Olson, and thank you, Chief Haynes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Because I know writing all these reports takes time too, and so we really do appreciate that as well. That takes us to our reports and this evening. Don't have much for the mayor's report. It has been an active and busy time. I had mentioned last time that the all-hands group leadership in our community was working together to deal with, with the food insecurity and lack of SNAP benefits for our community. That has eased up, although those benefit levels have changed. So you will continue to see some pretty big food drives this coming holiday season. I hope folks can assist and participate in that, particularly the last I heard, which was a week ago, yesterday, the Elekar and Food Bank had five hundred and forty families signed up for a Thanksgiving basket, which far exceeds the need that they have noted prior to this. So continue to support those as you can. That brings us to reports of council representatives and boards and commissions. We missed a few last time. Does anybody have anything to report from boards? Well, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a report from the library board. So the library board met on the twelfth of this month, not quite at the crack of dawn at seven AM, but getting pretty close to it as it gets, gets light later and later this time of year. There's a little bit of a discussion regarding the collection development policy. It has been placed on the website now so that it's a little bit more transparent. The collection development policy, what that does is it determines how we select items to add to the collection of the library. Everything has limited resources and so ensuring that, you know, those, those, those funds are spent and placed in areas that, you know, the community will benefit from. There also has been some changes to the computer system a little bit. There were some email hacking concerns by a patron, not by staff. And it was on one of the CCRLS computers that was in the library. They didn't find anything, but they did find that some of those machines are running a version of Windows that is no longer supported and updated. So while they were troubleshooting that. So currently they're down to, they're down to three computers for public use there. This isn't the, you know, computers behind the desk per se, but this is the public use computers. So they've temporarily reduced the amount of time and the numbers of times per day. The public can use those computers to ensure that there's still equitable access across, you know, across them for those who need it. The library's also engaged in some of the food collection and food drive activities that were mentioned. They're supporting the Elekar and Food Bank. You can drop items off there at the library. This runs through December thirteenth. Also running through December thirteenth, they're doing their Kasa Giving Tree. And that goes to, that goes to youth who are engaged in the court system. You can pick up a tag, the way it works, it's kind of cool. You pick up a tag on the tree and then get, and the tag says, you know, an age and some general ideas for items, then you go get that item and bring it back. Really, really cool process and really wonderful way to, for the community to give back to youth in need. There's also been a lot of activity at the library reverting puzzles. Puzzles are kind of the hot topic right now. Not just at our library, but at libraries across the nation and how they bring people together, right? So there's a puzzle table near the checkout desk and, and you can, you know, as you're waiting, put a couple of pieces in or you can spend a little bit of, of time there. I think the point is that one person's not necessarily finishing that puzzle, although any puzzle masters here would be welcome to. But that it's really building an extra connection point for community building there in, in this public space. There's going to be a puzzle challenge coming in January and, and more in puzzles to come. And you, of course, can also check out puzzles at the library if, if you're, you know, tired of all the ones you have at home. Relating to some of the things that we discussed tonight, there have been some vandalism issues at the library. Sounds a lot like teens hanging out is the, as, as, as the place to be. They've reviewed cameras, et cetera, damaged an outlet. And so they're doing a little bit to secure that space a little bit more. And also, and you spoke, Chris spoke very highly of the work that the police department's doing to support the library and that. Really just becomes a, you know, again, public safety issues. And if teens are over there doing that, what other things are they exposed to? So. So grateful for the collaboration there. The library will be closed a couple days around Thanksgiving, the 27th, 28th, for Christmas, 24th and 25th. And then they're, they're opening late on December 11th for their staff party. So, and they'll also be closed New Year's Day. There's a bunch of events going on at the library as well. I won't read all of them to you, but I've got quite a list on my other page. Everything from reading challenges to book sales to family bingo. Please go onto the website and onto the city website and the library website, look at those events. And a lot of great things out there for you all to do as we near the holiday season. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Counselor McKeel.
I just wanted to have a follow-up on Counselor Lopez's events for the library. Because it's Thursday, November 20th. It's 6 o'clock is the Farming While Black documentary, which is an amazing documentary. I saw this at Chomeckin Community College when they were filming it there. And talked with a couple people. We had to get it here in town. Very uplifting story about a young couple getting a farm. You'll, you'll take away just lots of happiness and joy. And there's pizza. So, I mean, that really brings out the joy. So it's a really great film. This Thursday.
Counselor Carey.
Planning Commission meets tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. And that is the beginning of the change of the land swap to change the urban growth. Yeah, that, the, that process, it's a work session. So there's work to be done, but that's the beginning of that important process.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Counselor Ridgway.
Thank you. And just a couple of updates from the Parks and Recreation Board. There has been, there's been a bid recently that was awarded to a construction company to start the construction of a boardwalk, the gazebo, restrooms and pavilion in Monmouth Recreation Park. That probably not going to begin right away, but in January, I believe they will begin that. Actually, no, sorry, spring, not January, with the goal of completing it by June of 2026. So we have some big projects that are coming up soon. Also pickleball courts, one of the concerns in the community has been, can we broadcast some general rules, some etiquette rules? And so that people can make best use of the courts and not have to wait too long for people to finish using it in front of them. Apparently, they're getting lots more use than I was aware of. But there's, there's sometimes people that are waiting on their opportunity to play. There are a couple of groups that are trying to organize some tournaments coming up, kind of grassroots level tournaments. And that's exciting to see the community taking, taking the most out of the opportunity of having the courts. So good things coming up with those. And we're starting in the discussion of looking at ways to utilize grants for the recreation grant program. So that will be coming up very soon. We do have an opening for a board member on the Parks and Recreation Board. So if you know somebody or you're interested yourself, please apply. We would love to have a full, full table. Thank you.
All right. And again, this evening, our city manager, as she mentioned at our last meeting, would be off for a little bit. And happy to report that she is doing well and we expect to get her back here. But in the meantime, and because he has apparently nothing else to do, because he's fully staffed now. Oh, my gosh. Yeah. So in addition to running the fine department, Chief Isaiah Haynes is our pro temp city manager. So if you want to give us a report about what all you've learned about what goes on in the city, when you're in City Hall now once in a while.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight in a different seat. And before I give the updates from the departments in the city, I'll just add that actually, these last few days have been really kind of enlightening to me in the sense that, you know, I'm responding to different emails, taking some different phone calls, and I have a different view of the work that our staff does. And I just want to give kudos to the department directors and whatnot. I'm familiar with the things that they do, but I'm seeing it through different eyes. And we have a really strong staff that do a ton of amazing work that you guys all know about. So I'll just, I'd like to just say that to everybody that doesn't maybe know. From the communication standpoint, I want to remind everybody that the Woo True Lighting Parade, Making Spirits Bright event will take place on December 5th at 6:00 PM. The city will have a handful of departments participating and a handful of vehicles that'll be in the parade. Also, just a reminder to check out the latest episode of the Monmouth Monthly to hear about the fun activities planned for the weekend. Power and Light has been busy changing out meters and getting ready for storm season. Right now, they're, they're also, holiday decorations are being installed and City Hall lighting is scheduled for next week. At the senior center, there's a lot going on. Actually, today, they partnered 17 older adults with 17 Woo Gerontology students. They conducted some life review interviews, talked about lived experiences and intergenerational communication. And this is something that they've done before, I believe, and also an ongoing partnership that they hope to do every fall term. This last weekend, I believe, the Senior Housing Speaker Series, Part Three, gathered feedback from 17 participants about senior housing spaces and senior community center improvements. Just a reminder that there is no November Senior Advisory Board meeting. There's going to be an early December meeting. It will feature the AARP webinar. On December 12th and 13th is the Holiday Bazaar Bake Sale. So don't miss that opportunity to get some Christmas shopping done and get some local handmade goods there. There's been a lot of good updates already given from the library, but I'll just say that this, I think it was this last weekend, 38 teddies joined the garden and tool maintenance class. And this is an ongoing partnership with the Polk County Master Gardeners. Reminder again, the documentary Farming While Black will be shown on Thursday, November 20th, followed by some pizza and discussion. The library is again celebrating the season of giving through December 13th, supporting Cass's Giving Tree and Ellican Food Bank. And the finance department, the finance director is working incredibly hard with one of our former finance directors that's on contract, preparing for the December audit. So she's got her hands full. And at the police department, although we're super excited to be full staffed, we have two retirements at the end of the year. Our records manager, who's been with us for 17 years, and one of our longtime officers, who's been 25 years, are both retiring. I am excited to say though, that we have already run process for those. And we have a new office manager selected to begin on December 1 for some overlap. And also on December 1, we have a new Officer Brittany Cooper that will be started that day as well. So good things ahead for the PD.
Congratulations on our new office manager. I'm very excited, very, very excited. Amazing young woman who's worked here in our community for many years. All right. That does bring us to council comments. So our announcements, we've done a lot of announcements. Counselor Carey, do you want to, did you have something you wanted to add about here?
Yeah, we've heard both of the two electronic communication, email and testimony tonight. And we've got an issue that we're all aware of, of the RV situation. And I know there's not an easy solution, but there is a solution. And I think it's incumbent upon us to provide direction to staff. And it may not really be able to get rolling until Rochelle gets back in terms of, but we really need to drill on that. And, and I think we need to decide what we can do and what we can't and communicate that to the public, whether it's in a, not a white paper necessarily, but, but a release that comes out and said, here's the issues, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do. Joe's offering some solutions. Some of those might work, some of them don't work. And then sort of to put, you know, and drop down a little below that, because I've been going around the community looking for vacant houses that might be able to be converted and brought onto our housing inventory. And I've noticed, and I'm not sure that it's, it's a, that's a backsliding or whether I'm just noticing it. But we've got a lot of properties that are out of compliance in terms of automobiles, in terms of grass, in terms of shrubs, in terms of a lot of things. And it does not reflect well on our community. And I'm very appreciative of the fact that, that there, everybody's got different standards. I'm aware of that. But there are some common standards. There are some common standards. And, you know, I think that, that we might be able to, because the people that are making decisions on whether to open a case on this or prosecute this lowercase p, this particular situation, may be anxious for some advice from us. What's the council going to do? Are they okay if we get a little more aggressive or are we too aggressive? I just think there's a message that would make, put everybody on the same page. Doesn't have to be confrontational, but, but, you know, we've got a little slide going on. And I'd like to see us take it, take it head on and get that slide stopped. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, good, good discussion. And you're right, we'll wait until Rochelle gets back. But certainly, it's going to involve the chief. And so having him be hearing some of this and think about it's great. Counselor Oberst.
Just like to follow along on John's comments. I have noticed the same thing. I've shared with Rochelle and Chief some ordinances from some other cities around the country that try to deal with some of these things a little bit. Recognizing, as the conversations chief and I have had, that limited manpower, person power to deal with that. Also, different standards. John, as you noted, some people have different standards that they feel just fine about the way things are, even though neighbors may not. And that it can turn into a situation for law enforcement of dealing with somebody who gets really irate, I mean, really irate about being told how to keep their property. And so all those things have to be balanced with the interest of the community in being a desirable place to live. And I don't know how to get at that directly, but I have wondered if this might be something that when we get to our next round of goal setting that we as a council have an opportunity to chat about and put that on the workload of our staff going forward in a more formal way and say, this is something that we feel is important. Here's some ideas, explore this, look at that. And then work our way through that and try, try to visit our ordinances that in many cases haven't changed in decades. You know, I had a neighbor who used to tell about every city employee was supposed to seize ordinance violations, write them down and drop them in a box at City Hall. And then they'd be dispatched to the right department to be enforced, you know? Well, that was the days when Monmouth was 3,000 population or less. I don't know that that works anymore, but I do think that we might want to look at the ordinances that were being enforced when Monmouth was a population 3,000 and may not have changed much in the interim. And look at what can we offer to support our CSO and our police department and our staff so that they can in turn support us as a community and try to be a desirable place to live? So just wanted to see if, if everybody's interested in that. We could put it on the work agenda going forward. Thanks.
Yeah, I think Sergeant Strack already said he was doing that. So take a look at those. What are, you're right, because sometimes we look at those ordinances and say, gosh, this doesn't give us much leeway. What could? And that's why we have great partnerships with other agencies to learn best practices. So yeah, maybe worth a dive. So at least we're understanding whose responsibility it is right now, what they, how they interpret our law and if they have recommendations. So it would help. Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to lead in with the same message that I had last time. An appeal for individuals in the community to engage with our warming shelters. As temperatures go down and individuals do, do live out in vehicles or out on the streets. And this is, you know, across both counties. This isn't a Monmouth initiative. This is Marion County, Polk County. We need volunteers to volunteer to keep warming shelters open. This is not, this is not warehousing people. It's not long-term. This is keeping people alive when the temperatures go down. And so you can go to m w v c a a dot org. And at the top of the page, there's a banner that says, you know, superheroes needed, volunteer for warming shelters. Click on that. There is a background check process that's very simple that, no, that you don't have to pay for. And even if everyone here or everyone or folks in the community can just do one night over the course of the winter, that will make a huge impact in keeping people safe, safe this winter. So please do go if you're able to, or if you know someone who's able to volunteer in that manner. I implore all of you to please engage in that space and keep people safe. I do have a couple of comments on what we discussed tonight as well. Clearly, we, you know, we are facing some issues in town that our current, our current code and our current system isn't well-equipped to address. And I'm talking about specifically the vehicles that are, that are left for long periods of time, the, you know, derelict vehicles, the vehicles that are, you know, in many cases not registered, not up kept. Individuals have, you know, received services elsewhere or other places. And those vehicles sometimes still stay there. And it sounds like a number of you had similar conversations that I did in terms of calling tow yards and finding out some of the grim realities on what it costs to tow some of those vehicles. But I believe that they're, they're like, I believe Counselor Carey noted, there has to be answers. We just haven't looked hard enough at them. And a couple of those answers were presented tonight. And I would be, I would be very, very much interested in holding some conversations with community members, with our police department and with other organizations that serve a similar demographic to see, gosh, is there a resource we've overlooked? Is there an avenue or not available of ourselves of? Is there something else? Not is there, but what else can we do to ensure that, you know, our laws are upheld and our, our community is, is safe? So I think the, the issue is multifaceted. Every, every vehicle that's there, you know, there's some that are left there in our, in, on my street that, gosh, I know that that vehicle isn't moving. But also, no one's living in it. But gosh, I do wish that some of those things would move. So there, there have to be answers. And I do firmly believe that by bringing together multiple individuals with multiple different talents and views on the issue, we'll be able to get to something that works well for our community. So count me in. Thank you.
All right. I think we have one comment to wrap up and then we all adjourn.
Glad to. We would like to acknowledge that indigenous tribes and bands have been on the lands here and throughout Oregon since time immemorial. It is not lost on us that the Willamette Treaty forcibly removed these peoples from their homelands in 1855 to 1856, the year that the city of Monmouth was founded. We recognize the pre-existing and continued sovereignty of the federally recognized tribes that are a vibrant part of this region today, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronn Community and the Confederated Tribes of Sletz Indians, and thank them for sharing their perspective on how we might care for one another and the land so that it can take care of us. We commit to engaging in a respectful and successful partnership as stewards of these lands.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Oberst. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? I don't see. Thank you. Very well.
Can't imagine being opposed. Can't imagine being opposed.